Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the City Council of the city of Oceanside.
Recording in progress.
I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask the city clerk to please call Ralph.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Please stand. And could Pastor Carlos Almanza from Simple Faith Baptist Church come to the podium?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's an honor to be here once again. Let's go ahead and pray. My God, come before your throne of grace. I just want to thank you so much for this humble opportunity, Lord, you've given me once again to pray on the behalf of the greatest city in the world, our city of Oceanside. Father, we just want to pray this evening, God, on the behalf of all of our council members. First and foremost, Lord, I pray for their families, God. I want to pray for the peace of their family, Lord, regardless of everything else taking place on this world. We pray for the peace of all of our council members, God, that you keep them well, keep them safe, keep them protected, Lord God. And, Lord, secondly, we want to pray on the behalf of all of our governing officials within our city, Lord, our police department, our fire department, all those, Lord, that are protecting our city, Lord, from evil, Lord, and keeping the balance, God, of good. And, Lord, lastly, I just want to thank you for all of those that are here in attendance tonight, God. I want to pray for them, Lord, and the peace for their families as well. Lord, I pray for the peace of the city of Oceanside, God. I pray for the restoration of good, Lord, to come back to the city. But, Father, as I know from my own personal testimony, God, that only comes when we experience that personal love through you, Lord, through what you offer through your son, Jesus. So, Father, I thank you. I pray tonight, God, that people will consider that love. And it's in Jesus's name that I pray for this meeting. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Almanza, for the invocation. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please, you may be seated. Thank you so much. We are on our Proclaimations and Presentations. We're going to go ahead and start with the Pet of the Month. We have with us a representative from the San Diego Humane Society and SPCA.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, council members. So, this lovely gal right here that loves snacks. This is Dixie Jean. She came into our Oceanside campus. She was an owner surrender. Her family, she's only, she's about 11, so her family had her her whole life, and they had to surrender her because they were moving to Hawaii. So unfortunately, they were unable to take care of her and bring her with them. But they did say that she's a very sweet, loving dog, that she's very gentle, and that she does love snacks. So if you have a party, she will be around all the people with the snacks. Now, just to let you guys know, we have a lot of dogs right now at all of our locations. Of course, we're here in Oceanside, so please support any one of our locations. But we have a dog promo running right now until the end of the 18th. So until the end of day Sunday, all adult dogs that are seven months or older, the fee is waived. Now, that includes they're already spayed or micro, they're already spayed or neutered, they're already microchipped, free veterinary exam within the first seven days of the adoption, they're already vaccinated, free bag food, and of course, the longevity of us there with you along the way for that pet. Also, if you know anybody that's struggling right now that has a pet at home that doesn't have enough money for food, we actually, at all four of our campuses, Oceanside, Escondido, San Diego, and El Cajon, we have our community pet pantry, which is amazing because people can come in anytime, Tuesday through Sunday. We're open on Mondays from 10 to 6 and pick up a free bag of food. So we're really trying to alleviate the amount of animals that come into our shelter by helping the public keep their pets in the home because we know that our pets are our family members. So we're here for you and your pets. And again, like I said, we have a promo running. So this beautiful gal right here, her fee will be waived along with so many other dogs that are seven months and older. So please, if you know anybody that's looking for a pet, spread the word. If you want to volunteer, spread the word. If you want to donate, spread the word. Thank you. We appreciate everybody, and have a great meeting.
Well, I hope you got to see her face. I mean, she is just looking for that love. So hopefully, you'll be able to pick her up at?
If you're being inside our Oceanside campus, we have two campuses, our dog location and our cat location. She's obviously at our dog location.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for sharing that with us. Next is our proclamation in honor of Constitution Week, and we are honored to have representatives from the Daughters of the American Revolution, the Santa Margarita Chapter. Come on up here. Yes? And you have some other folks with you. Would you like to bring them up? And if you would introduce them for me, for us.
Hi. Thank you so much for being here.
This is our honorary...
Yes. You can stand here.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, all of us here.
Adele Lancaster. Karen Kertlin. Julie Calvario. Wanda Prosser. And Diana Cook. All members of our chapter.
And I'm sure all the medals stand for something.
Oh, yes. Service. Service, yes, lots of... These are all members of the Santa Margarita Chapter. I have a little...
Well, let me read the proclamation, and then I'll hand the mic back to you because I know you have something very important to share with us.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. So this is a proclamation in honor of Constitution Week, which is September 17th to the 23rd, 2022. Whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution, DAR, founded in 1890, petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, a very good year, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Public Law 915 forever guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in the city of Oceanside and urge all of our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
Thank you very much. I am almost going to repeat exactly what you just said. That's what I wanted to say, too. I'm Jackie Burzens, the Regent of the... Yes, well, you know me, okay. I'm the Regent of Santa Margarita Chapter, Jackie Burzens. And the United States of Constitu... Yes. Oceanside was charred... Santa Margarita Chapter was chartered in Oceanside in October of 1929. So we've been here for a long time.
Probably the oldest organization.
One of the oldest, probably. The United States Constitution, America's most important document, stands as a testament to the tenacity of the Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. Constitution Week is celebrated annually during the week of September 17th through 23rd to commemorate the history, importance, and bring attention to how well it serves us today. And in 1929, DAR Constitution Hall in District of Columbia was built in tribute to the Constitution of the United States by the Daughters of the American Revolution. And in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through the 23rd annually to be dedicated to the celebration and observance of our great Constitution. The resolution was adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into law on August 2nd, 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. The aims of the Constitution Week celebration are to emphasize to each and every citizen their responsibility for protecting and defending the Constitution, to inform our citizens that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life, and to encourage the study of the historical events that led to the framing of the Constitution in September 1787. Additionally, Bells Across America is an annual celebration of the signing of the U.S. Constitution. Participants gather to ring bells, much as the church bells of Philadelphia rang out when the Constitution was first signed, 4:00 p.m. on September 17th in 1787. Please join the celebration and ring bells on September 17th for one minute at 4:00 p.m. Eastern Daylight Time or 1:00 p.m. Pacific Time to herald the beginning of this commemorative week. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
And at 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, this coming Saturday, we're going to meet at the Mission Saddle Array and ring bells. Everybody is invited. If you don't have a bell, we'll give you one when you get there. We need to make a joyful noise.
And that is at 1 o'clock. Is that correct? At 1:00 at the Mission.
Be there at least 15 minutes before.
Be there 15 minutes before. Oh. We're going to... Okay. Here we go. Thank you. Thank you so much.
On behalf of the National Constitution Week Committee, I'd like to present you with this poster that you can hopefully post for the week and let other people know that we're celebrating.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. We'll definitely post this up. Thank you. Thank you. Well, that's what inspired me to be a lawyer, our Constitution, our constitutional rights. We are now at the Proclamation in Honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month. And would, let's see, Erica Jimmy Shema Manuel, let's see, Gumarro Natalie, Raquel, Oscar, Oscarine, and Gabriela, and one other person for the library. Come on down, please. So these, I, this is something that we do annually with the city of Oceanside. And what I did was ask a few leaders in the Latino community. These are folks that do things in our community on a daily basis, many times without, you know, being honored or named or recognized for all of their efforts. And so I'm going to read only a portion of our proclamation. And then we do have a few certificates. So proclamation in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month 2022. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th, every year honoring the histories, cultures, arts, and contributions of American citizens and residents whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, North, Central, and South America, and the Caribbean, bringing pride to our Latino bicultural families, seniors, and youth. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the month in its celebrated, as it's celebrated today. And I'm going to skip over. Whereas Latinos began settling in Oceanside in the Eastside community in the early 1900s. Early Latino leaders include Lucy Marie and Joe Chavez, who championed issues for the Latino community such as paved streets, sewer lines, a park, Laurel Elementary, Jefferson, and civil rights. With Lucy becoming the first Latina, Latino elected to the Oceanside City Council. Pete Magaña, who was required to attend the Americanization Center for his education, served in the armed forces like many young Oceanside Latino men. And after returning home to Oceanside, started the Oceanside Chapter of the American GI Forum. Victor V. Asenor, a leading author, who wrote about growing up as a Latino in the Oceanside Carlsbad area. And Concha Hernández Green, who mobilized the Eastside community against violence with her Steps for Peace movement and who helped organize Partners for Healthy Neighborhoods. These early leaders created the many new Latino leaders that we have today, and these are just a few, contributing greatly to the economic and social development and success of our city and citizens and youth. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Oceanside. Well, come on, come on, Martha. Martha, you too.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, that's okay.
Really quickly and in no special order, sorry, they're not even in alphabetical order. Isabel De Anda. Yes. Okay. Isabel De Anda is a professional assistant at the Oceanside Public Library. Isabel works for youth services and has done Spanish Storytime, cuentos para niños, for years. She also creates and presents Kinder Readiness Workshops, Family Literacy Workshops, and works with ESL high school students. Thank you so much for your work, Isabel. Thank you. And, you know, I'm cutting to just the most important parts here. Erica Alfaro. As a published writer and author, Erica continues to share her story with our community's youth of the many hardships she encountered in reaching for her dream. And that was initially to graduate from high school, but then continued to achieve a BA from California State University at San Marcos and master's degree from California State University at San Diego. Erica wrote a book called Harvesting Dreams in English and in Spanish. And I so invite you to read that book because that is truly the story of our community here in Oceanside, as diverse as we are. Erica. Jaime Jimmy Figueroa. As a leader in our Latino communities, Jimmy first faced many obstacles as a youth, conquering all, resulting in achieving a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from UC Berkeley and Juris Doctorate from Thomas Jefferson School of Law. Jimmy has served the city of Oceanside in many capacities, from being a mentor to at-risk youth through the Vista Community Clinic Project Reach, establishing the Resilience Community Mentoring Program with Vista Community Clinic and San Diego County Probation Department, to now Executive Director of Operation Hope, and serving on the city's Police and Fire Commission. Jimmy. There you are. Thank you so much. Miguel and Shema Navarro. Miguel, what did I say? Oh, it's Manuel. I'm going to redo this one. Of course, it's Manuel. As leaders in our Latino community, Manuel and Shema have dedicated their lives to preserving their Latino-Chicano cultural history through their car club, Por Siempre Car Club. Manuel and Shema have worked with Main Street Oceanside's Dia de los Muertos and Noche Mexicana in presenting lowrider car shows as one expression of art in everyday life. In addition, Shema has kept her historic roots alive through her Azteca, Azteca dance troupe, Kalpuli Omeyakan. I applaud you both. Thank you. Gumara. Gumaro. It's Garcega. It's like having all this talent in front of me. I'm almost speechless here. Gumaro. And Gumaro, I've just felt so honored to be working with you so closely these past few months, this past year. Gumaro graduated from San Diego State University with a BA in Public Administration. He first began his leadership in business with the Vista Village Business Association and then was given the opportunity to implement the Main Street program in Oceanside. Gumaro is now the Chief Operating Officer and Director of Business Development of Main Street Oceanside. His passion is the preservation of the historic heart of our city through revitalization and growth. Gumaro. Natalie. Natalie is a community activist and leader around school and education issues, organizing parents and families in the Libby Lake community. Natalie also helps distribute food in her community to those in need, especially families still impacted by the COVID pandemic. Natalie, thank you so much for all your work. Believe me, organizing the community is a very, very tough job. And so happy that there is a leader such as Natalie in the Libby Lake community. Raquel. Raquel Avraz. Ooh, yeah. Having worked with other parents at Garrison Elementary School, Raquel saw a need in her community for representation on the school board and ran successfully for the school board for Oceanside. Raquel has been extremely successful in reaching out to parents and youth, addressing community needs at the school district, working with administrators and teachers. Thank you so much for your dedication to our youth, Raquel. Oscar. There you are. Okay, so it's Oscarid or Oscar? I wrote Oscar. Oscar grew up in Crown Heights during a time of much violence and drug trafficking. Oscar's desire for a better life for his family and community made him reach out with so much hope and strength of mind. As a result, Oscar created Lived Experiences, a community-based organization dedicated to addressing and conquering trauma-induced behavior. His dedication has resulted in creating a mobile laundry program, mobile food program, and sponsorships of mentoring and boxing programs. Oscar recently successfully created a North County Community Mental Health Forum sponsored by Aetna and Blue Shield of California. Oscar, I applaud you. Gabriela. Gabriela Hushmand. Gabriela is a co-founder of Mana of North County, established in 2009. Mana's signature program is the Hermanitas Mentoring Program for Latina teens. Mana teaches principles of success and overcoming obstacles, how to choose a career based on skills and interests, planning for college, setting and achieving personal, academic, and career goals, and leadership development. Gabriela, thank you so much for your, all your work. I'm going to say yours. Daniel Dominguez. Daniel. While working for Edison at the San Onofre Nuclear Power Plant, that's SONGS, Daniel was instrumental in recruiting Oceanside residents to work at the power plant. By establishing a training program through Maricosta College, he helped prepare Oceanside residents for these livable wage jobs. Thank you so much. And we have joining us council members Christopher Rodriguez and Cory Jensen. I just, I want to say that this is just a few of our Latino leaders. Again, they work tirelessly every day to try to make positive change in Oceanside. And I am so honored to be in their midst, really, truly, for everything that they do. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your work. These are thousands of hours, right here, of mostly volunteer work. Oh, and this is Martha. Martha is a veteran. First and foremost, though, she is an Oceanside resident that cares so much about our community. Martha is on our Vista Unified School Board District. And Martha has been working very, very hard. First, as a teacher, I forgot to mention that. She's also a teacher, and she's on the Vista Unified School District. And I thank you so much, Martha, for everything, everything you do. It says, "I didn't have it with me." Would you care to say a few words?
Well, I just, I see this beautiful representation of our community. And what I really see is all of the efforts and all of the hardships of our parents and grandparents who came here and either came to this country to provide us a better life if we're immigrants or to reach the American dream. And so I really see this as honoring our ancestors, my mom, my grandparents, and all of your ancestors. And I know they're here with us tonight.
Thank you, Martha Alvarado. Thank you. Okay, we're at Closed Session Report. Mr. Mullen.
Thank you. There was no meeting on Item 1 on the Closed Session Agenda. The council did meet on Item 2A, Conference with Legal Counsel on Existing Litigation. The council met and gave direction on three workers' compensation cases, Scott Hunter versus City of Oceanside, Jeffrey Merzanas v. City of Oceanside, and Patricia Townsend versus City of Oceanside. None of those cases are reportable under the Brown Act at this point in time. Council also met on two litigation items under Item 2A, Centeno v. City, and Travelers Casualty Insurance v. City. Again, the council did meet and give direction, but there's no action to report under the Brown Act on those two items. Finally, the council did meet on Item 2B, Conference with Legal Counsel on Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Subdivision D-2 of Section 54956.9. The facts and circumstances that justify the Closed Session are printed on the agenda on Item 2B. I can report that the city council has voted unanimously to authorize the release of a redacted investigation report tomorrow. And that will be placed on file with the Office of the City Clerk related to that item.
Thank you. We're now on our Consent Calendar Items, Item Number 4320. Have there been any requests to pull by the public?
No items have been pulled by the public.
There's a motion for, to approve. There's Anna Second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We're on Item Number 21. These are general items. Award of a Contracted GSE Construction Company of Livermore in the amount of $1.4 million for the construction of the La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant Digestors Cleaning and Piping Improvement Project. Approval of a Professional Services Agreement with Boudier Engineering of Tustin in the amount of $2,027,000 to provide construction, management, and inspection services. Authorization for the city engineer to approve change orders for up to 15% of the contract value for any unforeseen conditions. And authorization for the city manager to execute the agreements upon receipt of all supporting documents. We have a report by Mabel Uyeda, Acting Principal Water Engineer.
Thank you so much, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and city council members. This is for Award of Contract for La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant Digestor Cleaning and Piping Improvement Project. Staff recommends that the city council move forward with the actions that Honorable Mayor Sanchez just mentioned. Background about the project. The La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant was built back in 1949. This is cleaning, replacement of existing piping and valves on the primary and secondary digestors and also gas protection equipment. The design for this project was completed in July 2022 and advertised for bidding also in July and selection of the contractor as well as construction management and inspection services in August. So all performed within, completed within one year. As you know, the La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant is expected to be decommissioned. However, this work needed to be expedited and is important to meet our permitting and regulatory requirements as well as making it a safe working environment for our staff. Construction bid results. We received two bids on August 9th. We received two bids on August 9th. The engineer's estimate is $1.17 million. GSE Construction Company was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder at $1.48 million, and the next bidder was over $1 million more. For construction management and inspection services during construction, we received three proposals, and Boudier Engineering was selected based on best value. Cost and funding for the project would come out of the La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrades Project Account, and that is funded through our sewer fixed asset replacement fund. After the completion of the project, there would be a remaining balance of $214,000. Staff recommends that the city council award a contract to GSE Construction Company of Livermore in the amount of $1,481,400 for construction of the digest or cleaning and piping improvements. Approve of professional services agreement with Boudier Engineering of Tustin in the amount of $227,987,000 to provide construction management and inspection services. Authorize the city engineer to approve change orders up to 15% of the contract amount, and authorize city manager to execute the agreements upon receipt of all supporting documents. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. Back to the council. There is a motion by council member Weiss to approve, and second by deputy mayor Keim. Any other requests to speak? No. Let's vote.
Motion approved, five oh.
Thank you. Item number 22 is approval of change order four with TC Construction Company, Inc. of Santee in the amount of $1.2 million for a total contract amount of $10.5 million for the Oceanside Boulevard Sewer Lift Station Relocation Project. Approval of amendment seven to the principal services agreement with Infrastructure Engineer Corporation in the amount of $30,000 for a total contract amount of $1.2 million for engineering design services. Approval of amendment one with Valley Construction Management of San Diego in the amount of $181,850 for revised contract amount of $1.1 million for construction management and inspection services. Appropriation of funds in the amount of $1.85 million from the Sewer Fixed Asset Replacement Fund unrestricted fund balance, and authorization for the city manager to execute the change orders and amendments. And we have Mabel again, Mabel Uyeda, acting principal water engineer.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and city council members. This presentation is for our Oceanside Boulevard Lift Station Relocation Project amendments and appropriation. The lift station is currently in construction, and staff recommends that the city council approve the actions that Honorable Mayor Sanchez just mentioned. The lift station is shown in the exhibit here. It's off of Oceanside Boulevard, just west of the I-5. The green square at the top is the old lift station, and the new lift station is just west of Vine Street. The change order for TC Construction will involve the sewer main that is between the two lift stations, shown in blue, as well as the force main that's shown in green at the end of the page, and that sends flows to our La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant. Here's another image of our existing lift station next to the Best Western Hotel. The new location is just west of the Fresh and Easy that is no longer open.[830.25][830.25][laughing]
The former.
So, lift station design began back in August of 2014. The original design included replacement of the 10-inch force main, that's about a quarter mile to our La Salina Wastewater Treatment Plant. At the time of final design, we were looking at a connection to a new force main in Oceanside Boulevard, so removed that from the original bid for the lift station. At that time, the award was, it was awarded to TC Construction in December 2019, and Valley Construction was awarded the construction management and inspection services. We have since determined that it was just operationally complex and too challenging, so we eliminated the idea to connect directly to the new Buccaneer Force Main and are now including back into the original design the 10-inch force main replacement. So the construction change orders for TC is for the 10-inch force main replacement, and also during construction, there were some issues with the 21-inch gravity sewer that's between the two stations due to unsuitable soil conditions. The total amount for that is $1.25 million in change orders. This will also extend our professional services during construction. This includes IEC's construction administrative support as well as Valley Construction or their construction management inspection in amount of $211,150. Funding for the project would come from the Oceanside Boulevard relocation account, which is currently in the negative. So to support the construction and additional work, we will be appropriating additional funds from our sewer fixed asset replacement to fund this additional work, and the appropriation is $1.85 million. Staff recommends that city council approve change order four with TC Construction Company of Santee in the amount of $1,253,937 for a total contract amount of $10,558,027 for the Oceanside Boulevard Lift Station Relocation Project. Amendment seven of the professional services agreement with IEC in the amount of $30,000 for a total contract amount to date of $1,279,408 for engineering design services. Amendment one with Valley Construction Management of San Diego in the amount of $181,850 for construction management and inspection services, and appropriation of funds in the amount of $1.85 million from the Sewer Fixed Asset Replacement Fund unrestricted fund balance, and authorize city manager to execute the change order and amendments.
Thank you, Mabel. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
There are no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. Is there a motion? There's a motion by deputy mayor Keim to approve. I'll second that motion.
Motion approved, five oh. And if Andy's back there, we're going to get our IT.
We need to restart now?
Do we need to restart?
We, can we go on?
We'll, we'll go on, but just for the record, the, the vote was unanimous, five zero for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get to public communications on off-agenda items, starting with advanced requests to speak. We have Katie Taylor. Is she here?
Yep, I'm here.
Ah. You're helping us make sure that, oh, we're already restarted.
I think I got all my pages here. Is the camera working tonight? Oh, okay, thank you. All right, hello, good evening, council. I want to talk about political abuse. First, let me acknowledge the proclamation in honor of Oceanside National Hispanic Heritage Month. My own family has deep roots with the Hispanic community, as does council member Corey Jensen, who is proud of both her Hispanic and Scandinavian heritage. It is my understanding Corey is the only Spanish-speaking person on the city council, something people may not know. My beginning remarks will regarding a specific incident at the last council meeting. The second half will be regarding the political abuse I think the entire city council is receiving over building and development, with my suggestions how to stop the anger and abuse that's directed at the council and open a better understanding for residents. Now let's begin. When people use their opportunity to speak to disparage council members, in my opinion, it's remove their own political agenda. At the last council meeting, Ken Layton, Joe Hill, disparaged myself and Patty Kirschwin and council member Corey Jensen. I'm here to speak out against such political abuse and set the record straight. Anything I say tonight, I will say directly to anyone I mention, in some cases, I already have. To start, I want to put a face to those hurt by the commentary of Joe Hill and others, the people their false comments hurt when they malign council members and individuals with false statements, such as attacking Corey Jensen with claims she does not live in Oceanside. Mrs. Patricia Verilla is here tonight, Corey's mother. Can I?
Okay, but you're only speaking, right? She's not speaking.
I'm only speaking. She's just here for being pretty.
Okay, continue.
Mrs. Verilla's family in 1949 started the first commercial laundry in Oceanside, Polymer Linen Company. Mrs. Verilla attended Oceanside High School from 1953 to 1957, a cheerleader all four years. Pat received a scholarship to Oceanside Carlsbad Junior College, now known as Maricosta College. In high school, Pat met Corey's father, Keith Jensen. Corey's father is the first All-American football player from Oceanside Carlsbad Junior College, and received a scholarship to UCLA. The Jensen family is also well-known in Oceanside as the owners of the iconic Scandia Bakery on Mission Avenue. Corey is very proud of her family and their Oceanside history. So when someone like Joe Hill and Arlene Hammerschmidt declares in public that Corey Jensen does not live in Oceanside, Mrs. Verilla is who they also hurt because she knows they are lying. To my recollection, I have never met or spoken to Joe Hill. He claims to have had a conversation with me regarding Corey Jensen. I recall no such conversation. The conversation he claims he had with me, I recall having something similar, though, with Arlene Hammerschmidt. Months ago, Arlene was standing at the bottom of the stairs, right out there, leading up to the council chamber, wearing a sandwich board, yeah, a sandwich board, pointing out all her false claims regarding Corey Jensen, to lure people to sign her recall petition. Arlene was trying to get young women, a young woman to sign the petition by ranting on with her false information, such as Corey does not live in Oceanside. I spoke up and told the young woman what Arlene was saying was not true, and the young woman declined to sign. It seems even once, the San Diego District Attorney dismissed the allegations filed against Corey falsely claiming she does not live in Oceanside is not enough for Arlene Hammerschmidt, Joe Hill, or Ken Layton. To this day, they continue their slander. To start, on Joe Hill's accusations about Corey's unpaid property tax, let's pull back the curtain on Wells Fargo Bank, who has mishandled Corey's mortgage and impound account. True, on August 14th, 1922, this year, Bloomberg News published a detailed article regarding the gross incompetence of Wells Fargo Bank. Headline, "Wells Fargo Plans Major Retreat From Mortgage Business That Long Dominated: Scandal Spur Debate Among New Leaders At The Bank." Page two of that article, you can pull the whole article up, it's easy. "The past year, flare-ups have included a $250,000 fine for lapses that hurt borrowers in distress." Page six. "Wells Fargo Mortgage Unit Has Generally Been Featured in Scandals, With The Bank Vowing To Do Better." In 2018, the Office of Controller of Currency and Consumer Financial Protection Bureau fined the company Wells Fargo Bank $1 billion for a variety of abuses, including mortgages.
Thank you very much.
That's 10 minutes?
That's five minutes.
Oh, I thought I got 10.
No. Nobody get, well, only the council gets 10 minutes at this point. Everybody else gets three or five.
We're not signed up to speak in public comments.
No, thank, no, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very much. So next is Brandon Butcher. Do we have Brandon Butcher? I don't see anyone. How many requests do we have to speak that are not advanced requests?
Seven.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started?
Okay. Our first speaker is James Marmack, to be followed by Katie Taylor, to be followed by Shelley Parker.
Well, Katie Taylor doesn't get a second shot at it, so.
Do I need to finish on this?
No, no. Thank you. I, I think we got the general idea.
So, I'm approving.
Yeah. Sorry. I think she can do that herself, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I can just get that documentation.
Mr.?
Mr. Marmack. Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Sanchez, members of the council. I'm James Marmack from the Oceanside Longboard Surfing Club. We just completed our 37th annual longboard surfing contest at the pier, August 12th through the 14th. Not quite as long as the DAR has been around, but we've still, 37 years for our surf club is a long time, we've been putting on this contest at the pier. This year, we had over 330 competitors from the East Coast, Texas, and up and down the West Coast. The competitors ranged from 10 years old to 77 years old. We're the longboard guys, remember?
Wow.
We could not have done this contest for the past 37 years without the support of the city of Oceanside, the lifeguards, the fire department, the police department, Public Works, and especially Patrick Young from the Parks and Recreation Department, who guides us through the permitting process. The Oceanside Longboard Surfing Club is a 501(c)(3) organization, a local organization, and our mission statement states in part that we want to contribute to our local community by promoting youth surfing, preserving surfing culture and history, and coastal conservation. To that end, we donate proceeds from our contest to the California Surf Museum on Pierview Way and to the local public school surf team. We are proud in our club to have the 1963 United States men's champion from Oceanside, grew up here, LJ Richards, in our club, along with world-class women longboarders Avalon Gall and Rachel Tilly. I just want to say, we really appreciate the city's support every year for us putting on this contest, and we're looking forward to 37 more years. Thank you all.
Thank you so much for doing that. Thank you.[1631.74][1631.74][applause] Longboarders. She, she already spoke.
Okay. Well, good eve, good evening, mayor, council people, council members, I'm sorry, excuse me. So I'm here tonight to speak on the housing affordability of mobile home parks and how important that I think that it is to the city. It is a way of living that we, as homeowners, invest in. We pay into the fund that helps to administer an oversight, and the city is not asked to put any money into that because the park owners pay the other part of that fund, and it is, I think it's a really important way of life. We have 15 parks in this city, and they are very important to everybody that lives there. There were five key members who did not or were not able to attend the Manufactured Fair Practices Housing Meeting that was called. There was a key vote on this. We understand that technically we did pass and were accepting of it, but unfortunately, Mayor Sanchez, Jonathan Barrego, Dave Parsons, and, sorry, a couple other people, especially George McNeil, he had a medical reason with his wife's health, were not able to attend. And I do know that a lot of times, meetings are actually moved when key people cannot come. So it was very disappointing to all of us that came to that meeting, and so we just want to say, this is, this is something you guys have to help us with, and we hope that we can count on integrity and respect for this way of living. And I just want to also state for the record, I don't see a job posting yet for the code enforcement three, which was supposed to be the Mobile Home Park Inspector. Customer Care does not understand mobile home park problems and how to deal with them, and so that's been going on for months. We have not gotten, I, I've been checking the board, so I don't think that we've gotten that taken care of, and we certainly that taken care of, and we certainly don't have the commission, or the committee, excuse me, to be able to revamp the inspection lists. Our parks are 50-plus years old. That means the infrastructure is, well, very senior, and one of these days, there may be sewage running out in them. So we want to keep these parks as a way to live and not have people on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy Beal?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, councilmembers. I'm Sandy Beal, the park representative from Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park, and I'm the president of our homeowners association. I have two very short comments tonight. I attended the last Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission meeting on Thursday, September 1, 2022. I was very upset to see that five key people did not attend that meeting. Chairman George McNeil, City Liaison Mayor Esther Sanchez, Fire Chief David Parsons, who was the previous fire marshal, Code Enforcement Manager Kirk Munt, and City Manager Jonathan Barrego. Believe me, I totally understand that people get sick and there are unforeseen circumstances. I wish that meeting would have been postponed, until at least some of those important people could have been present. I'm not certain that Rancho San Luis Rey received a fair shake because of their absence. Okay, my second subject I have, I'm worried about the potential for flooding and fire due to the trees and brush that have been allowed to grow in the San Luis Rey riverbed. My two fears for Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park are flood and fire. If there's a large amount of rain, it's very possible we could have a flood because there's nowhere for the water to go, and if a fire starts, it will burn right through everything in that riverbed. The San Luis Rey riverbed needs maintenance as soon as possible. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Joe Hill?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Joe Hill, 22-year resident. Thank you, Ms. Jensen, for paying your taxes. Now you're like everybody else in this room, and we appreciate that. Let's talk about political abuse against the voting public. That occurs when a candidate ignores, covers up, and refuses to talk about all the issues that make them unqualified for an elected position. When information becomes available in writing, verifiably verbal, or recorded, ignoring and deniability without explanation shows a lack of character, integrity, and honesty. As Carl DeMayo said about the other Cory in Carlsbad, called her a toxic presence in city government, the same presence applies to Cory in Oceanside. Let's talk about verified disqualification information for Cory. Sending out letters from herself stating reelect Cory Jensen after getting Republican support, I don't remember an election where she was elected already. Attempting to close a Brook Street pool, accepting developer donations from Jacobs and Sudbury, failing to pay her TOT on the Oceanside Beach House until code enforcement gets involved, this has happened twice in two years. There's a delinquency notice from the city showing that she hadn't paid. She has had STR code enforcement violations and fines on that same property the last two years, which, by the way, is currently being assessed as a two-bedroom, two-bath house, yet she has it listed for sale and rented it up until recently as a three-bedroom, two-bath house. Perhaps she should fix that with the assessor. She claims to be a certified substance abuse counselor, but the certificate expired in 2020, and one of her current political donations is from a company that is in the cannabis substance business. How is that for good judgment and common sense? Even worse is the appearance of support being given by a group known as North County Patriots, where she spoke at one of their meetings. This is what they did after an incident happened in Morlago, and that's the type of group that she was speaking at the meetings. Thank you.
Ken Layton?
Ken Layton speaking for myself. Councilmember Weiss joined the city of Oceanside as an engineer way back in 1986, and rose through the ranks to become city manager. If any of the department heads he hired, let's say Police Chief or Water Department Director, for instance, lied to get the job, City Manager Weiss would have had to remove them. Well, what do you know? Mr. Weiss has admitted that Cory Jensen lied to get appointed to the city council. Both he and Councilmember Keim came clean to say they made a big mistake by appointing the scam artist. Mr. Keim stuck by his guns, but Mr. Weiss, whose four decades' connection to Oceanside apparently means nothing, he caved in, apparently owing a greater allegiance to the Republican Party than to the city he once served as mayor. Mr. Weiss said in essence, "We'll overlook the lies, and doggone it, I can endorse Cory Jensen after all." This slippery slope of squarely situational ethics enables corruption and cheapens both your position, in my opinion, and the city of Oceanside. It makes some of us ask, "Mr. Weiss, have you no honor?" And now, in full view, we see who exactly is on Team Cory Jensen. Why, what do you know? It's other real estate people who know that with Cory Jensen on this council, they can more easily turn Oceanside into a short-term rental ghetto, something no legitimate homeowner who lives in their own house wants. Mr. Weiss, we hardly knew ye. While you are much too cozy with those who want to turn Oceanside into a high-density asshole, at least I trusted you as a straight shooter. Now we see that your situational ethics allows you to cave when a higher calling, like short-term rentals or the Republican Party, comes calling and gets you to sell out. Cory Jensen aide Holly Lady gets $70,000 plus a year, and she doesn't even have to show up to work. And yet, what do you know? Holly Lady lives in Cory Jensen's Carlsbad House. As the church lady used to say, "Isn't that convenient?" Oh, and by the way, Ms. Jensen, how did you just end up paying that $70,000 that you've owed for many years? How did that all happen? We'd certainly like to know where the money came from. Thank you.
Thank you. George Gardner?
Yeah.
Is that the right way of?
That's me.
George Gardner?
No, him, yeah. First, I'd like to ask you, because all the OGs left, you've been there long enough, do you remember Miss Manny, the one-armed lady that had the antique place down here that got robbed for like a million dollars, $100,000, $1,000,000?
I don't remember that.
You don't? Okay, well, you ran into his sperm donor in the back of over here in the hood, so that's one thing. Now, this is just a recent one. I'm talking about a complaint from the thing about, upon calling the police dispatcher about a large male with a big rock bashing in the windows of a camper in front of my house. Needless to say, the lady hung up on me because she didn't like the way I was answering about the fact that it's my house, I'm here, it's my name, there's a person out there bashing in all the windows. I think you should send somebody out instead of hanging up on somebody. Now, I discussed this with the chief of police and the city little thing that they had with about 10 people up here the other day, but I've lived here for, what, 26 years? I've got innumerable things, $10,000 worth of claims from the police office thing. Now, these people that supposedly, and I live right back here in Langford, where you were born and raised with the soup gang, supposedly, but you've never lived there, you live over the river and through the grandmother's house behind locked gates. So to me, like I'm telling them, this has been going on way too long, now you got an outside source coming in and doing what should have been done forever. I've sent council members a thing on the same email I've had for 20-something years, talked them on the phone, walked up here in my pink burka when the guys were over here telling me that it wasn't important about the car club, coming and telling me I better be quiet about them coming up and down the street so loud, and me standing out there going, "You're number one," and then threatening me for the, what, second or third time, the last time they had to fly over and go stop the little pimping operation that was going around on the streets over here. So this has been going on for like 30-something years since you guys have been here. In 98, when I bought the house, you gave the police officers an opportunity to take a 20% deduction on the house, and how many of them took this up, this offer? None. So again, this recourse of all this stuff, of your supposedly stuff, you don't do anything about it. And you ostracize and attack the people, just like my black next-door neighbors, who I said, "Ruth, why do you put up with this stuff?" "Well, because I'm the only person out here, and when the police start shooting, they're going to shoot black people." Now, I've been raised in military bases and all this stuff, and I'm like, "What the hell are you talking about?" Until I came here and lived this stuff and found out it was true, because that's what they do. They come out and ostracize the people, condemn the people, say they know what's going on there, and I say, "Well, if you're stopping me about drugs over here, do you know on my address where this address is? Because this truck's been parked there for four years." You know?
Thank you very much, sir.
And how do I sign up for the next five minutes? Because we can discuss some other stuff at the pub.
Thank you. It's now 6 o'clock PM, time for the public hearing. Now, the public gets to speak on off-agenda items one time per person, whether it's in advance request to speak or signing up here. It's one time. Otherwise, we'd have several people signing up to speak twice. Thank you. So this is now 6 o'clock. We have public hearing item number 23, and that is receipt of public comment and acceptance of the report on water quality relative to public health goals. I'd like to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff.
Staff. Mr. Clerk, do we have any correspondence and/or petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you. We have a presentation by Lori Rigby, compliance officer. Ms. Rigby?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Lori Rigby, compliance officer in Water Utilities. This is a presentation summarizing the report on public health goals with respect to our drinking water. Staff recommends that city council accept the report on water quality relative to public health goals. Drinking water is regulated by the State of California Environmental Protection Agency. The EPA sets limits for contaminants in drinking water to protect public health. These limits are called maximum contaminant levels, or MCLs, the highest level of a contaminant that is allowed in drinking water, and this limit is enforceable. Information on drinking water quality is made available each year in the annual water quality report. Public health goals, or PHGs, is the level of a contaminant that poses no significant health risk. Unlike MCLs, PHGs are set without regard for economic cost or technical feasibility. While these goals can be used as guidelines in setting MCLs, they're not enforceable limits. We are not required, nor is it always possible, to treat water to the level of a PHG. Oceanside is required to develop and adopt a PHG report every three years to inform the public of any amount of a constituent over the PHG. In order to report all health risks associated with our drinking water, the report will describe all constituents, along with their concentrations that are detected above the PHG, will outline health risks associated with that detected amount, present treatment options, and associated costs to lessen or minimize the contaminants level. This report is on data collected from 2019 to 2021. I'm going to discuss the constituents listed here in the upcoming slides, including sources, health risks, and cost of best available treatment. A common source of arsenic is erosion of natural deposits. The health risk is one excess cancer rate in 1 million people. The PHG is 500 times lower than certified laboratories can detect. If this level was achieved, it could not be verified by testing. The highest detection of arsenic was 3 micrograms per liter, which is below the MCL of 10 micrograms per liter. Coagulation and filtration can be used to potentially remove arsenic to the level of the PHG. This would cost $11.1 million per year, excluding the cost to construct facilities. No additional treatment is recommended. Total coliform is a commonly found large group of naturally occurring bacteria, and is not generally considered harmful, nor is its presence unusual. Total coliform is used as a rapid indicator of possible problems in the water system. Anytime total coliform is found in the distribution system, follow-up confirmation samples are required. The best available technique for total coliform is disinfection. Staff is monitoring disinfection levels continuously through computer programs and sampling regularly for the presence of total coliform. No additional treatment is recommended. The common source of uranium is naturally occurring in soil and water. The health risk is one excess cancer case per 1 million people. The PHG is .43 picocuries per liter, and the highest detected value is 5 picocuries per liter. The high detection was below the MCL of 20 picocuries per liter, set by state and federal standards. The best available technology for uranium is reverse osmosis, which would cost $15.1 million per year, not including capital costs to build the facility. No additional treatment is recommended. The common source of combined radium is naturally occurring in soil and water, and also has a risk of one excess cancer case per million people. The PHGs are .05 and .19 picocuries respectively, and the highest detection in Oceanside was 2.76 picocuries per liter. This is below the MCL of 5 picocuries per liter. The best available technology for combined radium is reverse osmosis, which would cost $15.1 million per year, not including capital costs to build the facility. This cost is redundant to the treatment of uranium, as both are the same technology. No additional treatment is recommended. To reduce the contaminants to the PHGs would cost $26.2 million per year. This would cost an additional $636 per customer each year. Oceanside's drinking water continues to exceed all state and federal drinking water standards. Staff recommends that city council accept the report on water quality relative to the public health goals. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak for people who have turned in a slip?
Not on this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. This is the time for the public to speak on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please rise, approach the podium, provide your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak on this item. I see no one rising. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing, and turn it to the council. Councilmember Weiss?
Move approval, staff recommendation.
It says to accept the report.
Yeah, the action is to accept the report.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, no comments, so go ahead and vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Do we have Brandon Butcher here? Just looking for one more time.
Brandon Butcher?
No?
No.
Okay. Item number 26, these are adoption of ordinances. This is adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 37, Article 5, to authorize the Water Utilities Director to declare drought levels 2 through Level 4 changes, and authorize the city council to determine whether new portable water services, temporary meters, and permanent meters are issued at drought responses Levels 5 and 6. Any requests to speak?
There are no requests to speak on this item.
Is there a motion to deduce? Excuse me, to adopt?
To adopt.
There's a motion in a second. Please title the ordinance.
This is the adoption of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 37, by authorizing the Water Utility to Director to declare drought levels with the amendments that were approved by council on the introduction.
Let's vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Item number 27 is adoption of ordinances approving zone amendments, ZA 13-00001 and ZA 13-0001. Item number 27 is adoption of ordinances approving zone amendments, ZA 13-00001 and ZA 13-00008, to change the zoning designation from limited industrial to medium-density residential C, RMC. Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
There are no requests to speak on this item.
Thank you to the council. Is there a motion to adopt? There's a motion? There's a motion in a second? Please title.
This is the introduction of two ordinances. Ordinance of the city of Oceanside amending the zoning designation for certain real property located at 4665 North River Road, from limited industrial IL to medium-density residential C with a planned block development overlay, RMC PBD, Tieranorte Zone Amendment, ZA 130001. And secondly, the adoption of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside amending the zoning designation for certain real property located at 4617 North River Road, from limited industrial IL to medium-density residential C with a planned block development overlay, Tieranorte Zone Amendment, ZA 130008.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 3-1. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. General, councilmember comments? Councilmember Jensen, did you want to speak?
Yes, I would like to answer the question of the gentleman that left. Wells Fargo paid my taxes, my property taxes. Wells Fargo and I had been in a dispute for two years over an impound account that wasn't supposed to exist, but did. And we finally, thanks to Katie Taylor, resolved the issue, and they paid the taxes that I had paid for. So that's all cleared up. And because we were in litigation, I couldn't discuss it with you, Joe, I'm sorry. But it's all cleared up now. Everything's good. And as far as my KDAC, yeah, I'm not counseling right now, and that's just an endorsement. I don't need that. I'm an international counselor. I don't need an affiliation to practice, which I don't have time to do right now, anyway, just so you know. I don't want you to worry about that either. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments from, from councilmembers? Seeing none, I do have a very short comment, and that is, we also have a couple of firsts for National Hispanic Heritage Month that I'd like to celebrate with everyone here. And that is, as you all know, I believe Zeb Navarro was the first city clerk, Latino city clerk in the city of Oceanside. Yes. Thank you so much, Zeb. And Mr. Jonathan Borrego is the first Latino city manager for the city of Oceanside. And this is for 100, in 134 years. So I just want to say, we're diversifying, we're moving in the right direction. And everyone else, please have a safe trip home, and please enjoy all the other things that are happening in Oceanside. There's so much. So thank you very much. Meeting adjourned to see the next meeting.
Mayor, can I just add one comment real quick?
Yes. Councilmember Weiss?
For those of you who may know, knew him, Shelby Jacobs, who has been
Yes, thank you.
A force in Oceanside for a very long time, recently passed away, and his services are going to be this Saturday at 2:00. And Mayor, with your indulgence, if we could have a moment of silence for Shelby?
Yes, and my apologies. I did have something that I wanted to say here, and I'm trying to see if I can find it really quickly. Shelby Jacobs was 85. He is responsible for one of the most iconic video images of NASA's race to put a man on the moon in the 1960s. It's the off-scene, slow-motion color footage of a rink-like section of Saturn V rocket separating from the Apollo 6 spacecraft and spinning slowly away towards Earth, 200,000 feet below. Yet, for all of his 40 years working his way up to the executive level on the Apollo and Space Shuttle programs, Jacobs, who is black, faced near constant discrimination from his white colleagues and was never paid as well as other engineers doing the same work. To avoid rocking the boat, Jacobs kept a low profile in his working life, but in recent years, he has stepped into the spotlight to serve as a role model for minorities and women who face workplace discrimination. His triumph against extreme odds is being celebrated, was celebrated winter three years ago at, at the exhibit at the Columbia Memorial Space Center in Downey, near Los Angeles. Achieving the impossible dream, the life and dreams of Shelby Jacobs opened December 15 and ran through spring. Jacobs said he was honored by the recognition, but what he's most excited about is a day-long, was, was most excited about was a day-long program at the museum on February 16 to celebrate Black History Month. Jacobs never had any black role models in his field of work, so he liked to serve as an example of what could be achieved in spite of the ever-present challenges of prejudice, right privilege, and the low expectations that minorities still face. Quote, "That's the story of my life," he said. "I've never been apprehensive about doing something that had not been done before. I never presumed to limit myself to my own limitations." And I want to say that Shelby Jacobs was a wonderful man and wonderful leader in all of the city of Oceanside, not just for the African-American community, but for all of us. So yes, please stand, and let's have a moment of silence in What I read was an article that came out in the Union Tribune three years ago, and it was a wonderful piece. I felt that I needed to say to read it to you all. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.